Yeah.
Absolutely. I think G, well, you've told them. Uh, I love it. It's, they don't English. They're. I think that'll be fine. But this is accepted. Right, your, your, your board's full. Um. Your house, your new person? Yes, yeah, so then getting asked on driving. But there's gotta get a change. Or, or. And this. Yes, and he can also work in state. So, so he can guess what did she not know that. Because. You don't have to have been on. Yes. You don't live, yes, we don't. Yeah, because tomorrow says you don't know. Yeah, we don't know. The question is, I need to share that. So, like, yeah. Yes, yes. What about this? Here, just me. Have, have similar, for any of the bills? Whatever you think, there are apologies. There are, yeah, I heard. So, then, seriously, I don't know. Yes. Uh, but I just sort of, you know, starting to. I would. Yes, I'm mad. I'm very mad. Yes. That's, these look. It's not, I think you know how to do. That's all, just if you need, I think, I'm trying to. So, some of the. It's not, it's obvious, right? It's, it was, but usually I've seen. It's more than just us. It's, it's. That was Sarah. It was just in the screen, yes. I don't. No, no. I said, that's probably the start of it. A lot of it is a little. Right, that's great. I thought. It's off. Yeah, it's, it is, and the rest hasn't got out. I mean, it's, it's, they, I mean, I don't know. But. Another, you'll get a box. You're not, you know. You know, like, I know. Look at that one. I do a little bit hard, yes. I, that's. Yeah. I know, so. Anyway. Yeah, around, around the same time. I'm still a bit, I was like, it's a beach. It's like. Yeah, one, but it's also too late, stuff to do. Oh, right, yeah, that's good. That's good. For those who are. Yeah. So, obviously, that was. In fact, that's in the, I should have. No. But I'm, I'm, I'm. I think, I think. I think so. I'm here. Well, that's. We could, you know, you. But, but. Yeah. So, we just. That was. And, and. I mean, for. Yeah. But, but, you guys are. Well, yeah, you're a few of the cats. It was, it was. Yeah. Well, it was, it was. Now, they changed my, my, they just, they just. Everyone, the same, I think, guys, which. I mean. Oh, that was, that was. And that's, you're already, you're. I'm a little bit, and I mean, you do. I don't have to deal with all of those. Those are, those are. They're, they're. Those you brought up. And, and. That's, yeah, I think. Anything to transportation, I mean, they survive. So, many, because that was always. Just in many, well, I'm just, I'm, I'm. So, I don't. It's, it's. So, there's, there's, there's two kinds of, you know. I'll be, I'll see you on the rains. For. She's, she's. Second, though, you, you. This was, yeah, frankly, just. Yes. So, you have. They're, they're. Still. Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's a lot, it's a lot. So. Yeah. So. Well, that was good. It's made, you spoke today, and one of the. She's. Oh, others. And where do you can I have? You said, you know, something. No, that's fine. It's like, it's like, it's.
Good evening, Rob. Thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting of the Randa City Council. Today is our Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, 7:00 PM, regular meeting. Um, there are listening, assisted listening devices on the table at the back of the room for anyone who wishes to use them. Um. First, we will do roll call. Okay, council member G. Here. Council member Hoxey.
Here.
Council member Riley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Iverson.
Here.
And Mayor Malkani.
Here, thank you.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes to the proposed agenda?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, there are no changes.
If not, then do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
To move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, next, we have items for the good of the city, and there are no items for the good of the city tonight. So, we will move on to public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council on an item listed on the agenda if a speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the council? Seeing none, and there are no speaker cards, I will close public forum. Um, that moves us to item F, our consent calendar. The consent calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion, unless a council member or member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Um, do I have, and I don't believe we had any, do we have any public comment to pull any items from the consent calendar? No. Okay. Um, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar as proposed? Or would anyone like to?
It could, I'd like to, um, pull F5.
Okay. Um, so, council member G has asked to pull F5. Are there any other items on the consent calendar that any council member would like to pull for discussion? Okay, um, so, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar as amended, which would be including items F1 through F4 and F6 and F7?
Hold on.
Please go ahead. Okay. Council member Hoxey moved and second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Iverson, for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um. And does that bring us to item F5?
Yes. Are, um, council member G, are you interested in, uh, presentation, information, questions?
No, I, I just had a question. Given that, um, we only received the one proposal, I just was hoping staff could comment whether, you know, you're, I mean, you're bringing it for approval, so I assume your confidence factor is there. Um, but I know, you know, from the consulting world that when you only get one proposal, it's not optimum. Um, and certainly Opticos, uh, had done other work for us, so, um, I was just curious as to staff's view of what you did get as a proposal from them, so.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor Malkani and council members. Uh, as you've already reiterated, yes, I did receive one proposal, but I went back to speak with, uh, Opticos. Um, I think, uh, what you're seeing is when they did the downtown, um, object, ODS, objective design standards, uh, I looked back to see what that contract was, and it was 130,000, including the contingency. Um. What I did further was to check in with Opticos as well as Lisa Wise to compare some of the other contracts that they have done recently with other jurisdictions. And Lisa Wise has done, has worked with recently, Saratoga. Their bid came out as, or actually, these are, it's public information, it's complete. It was 159,000. They have worked with Seal Beach. Theirs was 257,000. The city of Piedmont was 159,000, and Rancho Cucamonga was 300,000. I also polled Opticos, and I said, I understand with the 130,000 that you did for downtown. Um, I think the key to that particular, um, contract was we did, uh, have a grant from HCD, what they call the LEAP grant, um, the local early action planning grant, which was about 90,000. So, that took away a big chunk of that 130,000. Um, and then the last, uh, poll was, uh, Opticos, Santa Barbara. They did go on what we would call a time and material contract, and it ended up being $300,000. Um, so I do find, even though it was the sole. Um, so I do find, even though it was the sole, uh, proposal I received, that given some of the other jurisdictions and the amounts that they've worked with, this is in the ballpark.
Okay. And you, and you felt comfortable that they, you know, were. You and, or city staff and them were on the same page in terms of the scope and what you're expecting as the, as the output from them, right?
Yes. What I'm not sharing with you is I actually already reduced this scope by about twenty-seven thousand.
So.
And so I feel comfortable that what they're providing will meet.
Okay. Thank you. Excuse me.
Yeah.
Of course. Cindy. Um. How does what Opticos is, uh, presenting now tie to what they did for the first hundred and thirty thousand? Are they going to build on what they already did? Are they starting from scratch again?
They're starting with a little bit additional research, which I think is, uh, going to be key and important in the situation where they're looking at additional properties. Um, with, outside of the Village Center and the, and the Theater District, we're looking at single-family homes. Um, what I want to emphasize in terms of, there was one, uh, line item or task item that looks at the properties, I think. And so I'm digressing a little bit. I went to a retirement party at Contra Costa County, and one of the comments that was made to me, and I had heard from staff internally, was that Arinda listed properties that weren't buildable. And so I wanted to make sure that as we're looking at objective design standards for certain properties, we're talking about properties that are buildable that this is going to apply to. So you'll see some task in there that looks at the research and the background of the, uh, of the sites that they're looking at.
Thank you. Thank you. All other questions? Any others? Councilmember Riley.
Um. Excuse me. What did you say earlier when you're, uh, answering, um, Councilmember G's question? You said something about twenty-seven thousand. What did you say?
Yes, I reduced, um, um, they, their original bid was actually one seventy-seven.
Okay.
So. And I reduced that by, um, taking out some of the, uh, uh, extra steps. I think there were like several meetings with staff, uh, to look at screen checks that I thought, hmm, little, little much excessive. We could probably get through that much quicker than what they're identifying. Um, we do, uh, look at engagement, but I felt that was a little maybe too much engagement. So we've put, pulled some out, but it's optional. It's listed as optional should you, in the future, you decide you want to move forth in that direction. It's listed there and what that cost might, might be. So twenty-seven thousand is what I reduced it by.
Okay. Okay. So, thank you. Um. It seems like there's still a lot of, um, sessions. Still seems like it's a lot.
Yes, and this contract, uh, unfortunately, is not a time and materials contract.
It is not?
That's, that's, that's new information that we just learned this afternoon, so I'm meant to share that with you. I apologize. Yeah. It's not a time and materials contract because they fear that if it is a time and materials contract, that it will go over the hundred and fifty thousand as budgeted.
Okay, so.
Yeah. That's new information.
Yes, I hear you. I hear you. I got it. I'm taking it in. Um. So we are stuck with four different sessions. We can't cut back and, you know, streamline this?
Opticos has been very receptive to me, I should say. And so just before this meeting, I did speak with the principal, uh, there for Opticos and said, you know, the council might want to come with another change to this. Uh, would you be open? For example, I said, would you be open for time and material rather than a fixed, uh, base fee? Um, and they said they would be, but they would have to go back and forth with me as well to sort of change that contract if you wanted to do that. Um, so I didn't reduce the number of, uh, as, as the contract stands right now, I did not reduce the number of, uh, meetings that they've identified.
Okay. So I'm wondering if the council wants to talk about reducing some of them. I don't know that we want to go on time and materials, but maybe we want to save some money and not have so many meetings. Everyone know what I'm talking about?
I'll chime in that I would like to have that conversation, yes.
Okay. So.
It's on page.
Any further discussion? I'm, I'm sorry, any further questions before we, and then I'll just open it for public comment before we have a discussion?
No more questions.
Okay. Um, if there's no more questions, then I'll open, um, this item, item F five for public comment. Uh, we have no speaker cards, and there's no one here, so I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Uh, Vice Mayor, did you have?
I guess just building on, um, Councilmember Hoxey's question, I, I was hopeful that we would come in under the not to exceed one fifty because the design standards we've got are so fully developed and we're such a small town. So I understand the need to look more broadly at the, the additional context, but I didn't think it would be a particularly big additional scope. Um, and so I would like to see it either go to a time and materials with a not to exceed or to have the scope with, um, you know, kind of a menu of add-ons. If we need more public sessions, if we need more development, we can, but we're not contractually bound. So if, uh, I would like to not approve this tonight and to see if we can, uh, improve the terms for potentially reduced scope.
And. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Councilmember Hoxey.
I was just going to ask if there were any urgency to approve this tonight, or can we look at it more fully? I mean, when I read it, it looked like there were quite a few steps and deliverables, and I don't have a sense of how much of this was done in the past and is redoing it versus how much of it is all new work and, and how much could be streamlined? I just don't know all of that.
I, I can't say there's quite a bit of urgency, and I would like, so I would like to be able to approve it at our very next meeting or to delegate authority in a way that it can just get done. I know that we're very, very late in getting our objective design standards into place for projects that can be approved ministerially, but I wouldn't approve it tonight for that reason. I just, I wouldn't want to dally.
I think if there's direction from the council to go back and talk more and get some additional optionality from Opticos, we could do that and be back at the next meeting. I mean, I don't know, the staff report itself won't change very much, but if there's some terms that we're looking to reduce the amount of, uh, meeting attendance and put those into, you know, optional, I mean, I, I think I, I hear what you're saying. I, wherever we can find some cost savings in this, um, this proposal, we should look for it, uh, and see if there's different ways, and then we can ask him to give us a proposal based on time and materials and just see how that shakes out relative to his sort of fixed cost approach that he's provided to us at this point. Um, but we can, we can also move some of these tasks to optional to bring down the base price of the contract as well. So if that's the council's desire, I see two head nods, I see a few more head nods, we can pull this item from the agenda and bring back to you at the next meeting with some additional information, and we can have it as part of a discussion. And I'd like to get it done by next month, though, because we're trying to get this ballroom. First of all, we'd like to report to HCD on our annual report that we've got a contract in place to do the objective design standards, since that's one of the policy objectives. We were intending on getting done by the end of twenty twenty-four, so we want to show that they were making progress in that's, in that regard, and then also just to get the timing right with the rezonings that are going to be necessary in twenty twenty-five.
That makes sense.
Yes. Councilmember Riley.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, who, when you're in the middle of all this, who decides, um, if you add on and have another study session or a public session?
Typically, if there's budget that allows for it, it would be LaShawn and I making that decision that we need. Either there's more community process that's necessary, but it's typically, we would only do so if we felt like we had enough budget to do it.
Yeah, but, but you don't want to waste the public's time, or, so you have to assess whether or not there's a need to.
Correct.
Hold the session.
Yes.
So you guys get to decide that based on the feel of things and how the first session went or something like that?
Yeah, so if we come out of an initial meeting with the community and it's somehow we see that there's going to necessarily, there's going to need to be more of them just to try and answer people's questions and be back to them with some responses. That's typically what we would do. But, um, you know, I just don't know what level of engagement the community wants to have over these objective design standards in the midst of the fact that you'll be doing rezonings at around the same time.
Okay. Any other, uh, points for discussion on this?
Is, is there any way to decide this tonight? Um. Is some way where you're giving, you know, parameters and let it go with that? Um, I don't, I don't know how to say it specifically.
I had the same question.
Okay. So I would ask our city manager and planning director, is there a way that the council can, can?
Is the objective to get it under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Or is, okay. So if that's the objective, then, um, we would probably need to go back and talk to them again. I don't, I mean, you could, you could give me authority to enter into an agreement up to a certain amount, and I could take that as a motion. Is that correct, Tessa? So you could say, if you, if the agreement you reach with them is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand, then you have the authority to proceed and enter into the contract.
How? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Riley.
Would you be saying time and materials or fixed?
Well, I think that would have to.
That's my question.
That would be part of this subsequent conversation with him around what he thinks time and materials would yield in terms of a cost for this project versus a fixed cost. His interpretation is he's afraid if he goes time and materials with this contract, given the history of community involvement, that we might run over the hundred and fifty thousand, so he was trying to fix his costs. That's not to say if he hit that number that he wouldn't ask us for a change order to the contract, right? So, um. But we could make it time and materials, and we could sit down and talk to him and figure out. It just means more work burden, I think, that's going to be placed on city staff to maybe do some of the revise, the revisions to the draft documents. Because as you see, the majority of the cost in that contract and that scope relate to the actual crafting of that document and the rewrite and the revisions. So that's where the, the lion's share of the costs are associated with this contract.
I, I. Okay, I think the council direction, though, was more concerned with, do we need all the community engagement? Is there any way someone?
We've taken a lot of it out of the proposal, but if there's more, I mean, the, there's still, you know, probably at least ten thousand plus dollars in community outreach. We could look at trying to.
Sorry.
Reframe.
Councilmember G.
I, I was just going to make a comment, and that is, after forty-five years of professional consulting, I would tell you that the, the time and materials contract is not the way to go in terms of saving money. You already have a cap on it if you make certain things optional. A consultant working on time and materials is almost invariably going to end up charging more than one that's starting out with a so-called fixed budget. So I wouldn't recommend the time and materials, um, even time and materials with a cap because it's not, it's not the mechanism that a consultant is going to be as mindful of their own management.
I agree with that.
I do have one other question, though, looking at the deliverables, um, Director Cross, um, in the, at the end of the day, are the, um, are the, are the final standards going to be something that anyone can access from our website, or is there going to be a handbook or? If people are, are, have a reason to be interested in them, um, how are they going to be able to find out what they are?
Uh, cer- certainly on our website, um, and that's something we can do internally staff. I don't, I'm truly need the consultant to do that part, so make the availability, um, So make availability on the website. As you're going to, as you probably already know, something similar to what we have with our tree management ordinance. We have a handout that helps people sort of guide them through that and where they might find it.
Okay. May I ask, the city manager, she has a recommendation. What I would prefer, just in the hope that we can get this done with minimal process, is if you recommend a number, whether it's 120 or 125 or 130, with the ability to have items earmarked as optional. So if we ultimately need those additional sessions or turns of the document, they're there with your discretion to approve, but they're not necessarily part of the fixed cost. And if there's a recommendation you could give us, I'd love to be able to authorize something in the hope that you can get that.
I'm somewhat uncomfortable doing that without sitting and talking with LaShawn for a few minutes. Just to make sure that we're, she's been the one that's been communicating with the consultant directly to see if there's any additional capacity in this number that we can lower it and reasonably expect to get the same work product without burdening staff too much and having to do work internally. So we could defer this item, take up other items, or give us a two-minute break to go confer. It's up to you how you want to handle that.
If it's permissible to take a two-minute break, if you think that would resolve it, that would, that would be fine, I think.
Or if somebody else is presenting the tree ordinance.
Yeah, we can, we can just chat when there's, bring this back at a later point in the meeting, and then we will have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, so we won't take a vote on this now. What, procedurally, how do we?
I think you're voting to table this item, and we will take it up again when the council's ready.
Okay.
So motion to table, second.
So do we have a motion to table?
We're going to revisit in a few minutes. Is that what you mean?
You can revisit it while you're getting a presentation. Are you doing the tree ordinance presentation? Okay. You could revisit it.
All right. I would recommend a five-minute recess to allow the city manager and planning director to confer.
Thank you. Okay. Do we need to vote on that? Okay. Taking a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Wow. So exciting. We did something new.
Working sessions?
We're concluding our recess and resuming our regular meeting, and we are still discussing item F5.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, in consultation with LaShawn and city attorney, we think if the council were to give me authority for a contract not to exceed $140,000, we would be able to cut $10,000 from this budget as proposed and leave that in the project-level budget and not on a time and materials basis.
Okay. Any reactions to that? I would find that acceptable, but I'm looking to my fellow council members and seeing nodded heads.
I'm a little disappointed the number's not any bigger than $10,000, but I respect the fact that it means that what you brought us originally was a pretty real number.
Yeah, we just, we were trying to go through the tasks themselves. We think there's some room in task one and potentially in task two. But when we start getting into task three, those working sessions are for staff, not for the public. And then the study sessions is another area where we probably could potentially eke out a little bit of savings. But as you can see, the line item isn't very big. And then the meeting and attendance and support for in-person. Two meetings in person, one has to be for the planning commission and one for the council.
Right. That makes sense. And I also want to note that Director Cross brought this to us, having already knocked down $27,000. So there is that. Do we have a motion then to?
Authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement not to exceed 140.
I'll move that we authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Optico's not to exceed $140,000 and to have the flexibility that the city manager and the planning department can work with the scope for that budget.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. I do want to note for the record, we did get a written public comment on this item, which we all reviewed, from Mr. Warnock. That moves us on to public hearing, item G, and there are no public hearing items tonight. Next on our agenda is item H, policy matters. And our first policy matter is a review of Arinda Municipal Code, Chapter 17.21, which is our tree management ordinance. And the recommendation is to receive the report and provide direction on whether to proceed with revisions to the city's tree management ordinance. Director Cross, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon again, mayor and councilmembers. I thought it was a good night to give staff time off. So we're now here to discuss and receive direction regarding the city's tree management ordinance. In the past, residents of Arinda have been required by insurance companies to remove protected trees to maintain insurance eligibility. Some residents report having lost insurance coverage due to protected trees located near their homes. There is no exception in the Arinda Municipal Code for this requirement. Staff, this is actually not quite what I wanted it to say, but staff has begun expediting the process, not by the normal process, which is what you see here, is 10 days notification period and a 10-day appeal period. The expedited process is that staff has been looking out for any type of tree permit that has come in where the request has been, in order to maintain their insurance, that they needed to remove, they needed to remove trees that were within five feet of their home. So where that has been, for example, I just received one on January 23, and I approved it on January 27, so it was less than the 20 days that you saw there. So that was a little typo on that printout. So here I'm listing what the exceptions are currently. A permit is not required when a hazardous or dangerous condition requires immediate action to protect life or property. Under emergency conditions, when ordered by a fire official, the public works director, parks and rec director, or city manager for a city project on city property or for a city project when the public, within the public right-of-way, to maintain a fire break as required by state law, to maintain an unobstructed flow of water for flood control safety in creek beds and waterways as determined by the city engineer, when required in writing by the Maraga Arinda Fire District for Fire Code compliance, following consultation with the planning director, who will annually make available to the city council data regarding how many times and where this exception is invoked. And the last exception is when an alteration, removal, or destruction of a protected tree is required for compliance with any federal or state law. So this is more for my gratification, too, is to do a little bit of history. So the last time the city council looked at a revision to the tree management ordinance was in January of 2021, when it was dealing with wildfire risk concerns, and we had just recently adopted the updated Fire Code. And so some of those concerns that the council brought up at that time were to add an exception to the process for trees required for removal by Fire Code, to adopt the disallowed plant list to prevent their inclusion in new development permits, to require slopes ability considerations for removing trees, to protect additional downtown trees. And what that means is that was a change from the size of trees, from 12-inch diameter-sized trees reduced down to 6-inch diameter trees, so that it would include additional trees in the downtown area. The other change was to increase the permit expiration timeframe from 30 days to one year. You will also see that during the pandemic, and my predecessor would also look at extending from one year to two years on tree permits. And then the last was provide additional clarification. This meant additional staff seeking clarification of things that they processed. So that was your last changes. Staff is looking at recommending, possibly updating the ordinance to include perhaps an additional exception that would allow property owners to remove trees to reduce wildfire risks. Exceptions would enable the removal of protected trees pursuant to the requirements of an insurance company. But for all exceptions, staff would recommend requiring documentation provided by the appropriate entity, clearly identifying the reason as well as specific trees to be removed. We mentioned that as because, let's see, it's eight months in position now, and I have only seen three applications and two inquiries. And we are emphasizing requiring the necessary documentation as we have had a resident come in and claim to have obtained MOFD approval, yet I could not verify who the fire inspector was. So this is why staff is sort of emphasizing if we do go with some sort of exception, that we would definitely want to require documentation. So what I have seen in a way of documentation, for example, the January application, is they usually show me the letter from State Farm, in this case. They do provide a nicely, actually hand-drawn site plan, but this particular resident also provided an ARBIS report. The charge for the application, in order for me to sort of look at it as an expedited type of thing, is the base application fee, which is $189. It's $60, additional $60 if there are additional trees. To give you an example, of the two or three that I have seen, it did not include multiple trees. It only included one tree, one healthy tree. So those would be some of the exceptions we would be looking at, as well as some of the other cleanup items that we noticed within the ordinance. So to keep this short, staff recommends updating findings for tree removals. These are some of the other things that we, staff, would like to see at least modified. And that's updating the findings for tree removals, not involving a development application. So you have category ones and category twos. Category one is removal of trees that are not involving development. Category two is the removal of trees that involves new development. So the current standards are limited in scope and do not necessarily preclude removal of healthy trees. The effect of tree removal or destruction on shade, views, privacy, fire safety, soil erosion, and flow of surface water. The number, species, size, and location of other protected trees to remain in the area. So more specific standards would help support the protected status of healthy trees that do not meet the alternative exceptions to the process. Alternative standards that we would like to sort of look at would include the subject tree's health, the future potential for impact on public health, safety, and property, consideration of alternatives to remove. So basically, what I'm talking about is some of the other cleanup items that staff would probably like to bring forth to the city council and ultimately to the planning commission of other areas within the code. But mainly, we would suggest perhaps looking at an exception to the code if it has to do with fire safety. So I know you have questions. So recommendations to take public testimony, take feedback from council. If directed to do so, staff will complete an internal review and draft updates to the existing tree management regulations. Put on the agenda first by code, because it would be a text change or a zoning change. We would go to the planning commission and then return with their recommendations to the city council. And then we would update the tree management handout, and this is more of our publicity advocacy, and disseminate information to the public if an updated ordinance is adopted. I think that should be it. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Director Cross. City manager, do you have anything else to add?
No, I appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward. I know that the council and the community are very concerned about wildfire risk and the role that maybe some trees on property might play in helping to exacerbate, you know, structure-to-structure fires in this community, should that ever happen. And I know that this is something that we've heard from the community, especially about the issue of insurance coverage. And we wanted to make sure that we had a pretty robust conversation about the things that you'd like to see maybe altered with this ordinance without impacting the rural, semi-rural character of the community. So appreciate any sort of feedback that you want to provide to the staff on ways in which we can make this a more effective ordinance and not put people through the burden of spending $190 and potentially waiting several weeks to get a permit to take down a tree in order to get their insurance coverage.
Thank you. Thank you for a great report. I think we have some, I'm sure, these questions. Who wants to go first?
Okay, Vice Mayor Iverson. First question is, one of the public comments that prompted this discussion was somebody where people say that their insurance companies are looking at aerials, like on Google Maps, but the trees, where the tree trunk is not particularly close to the house, but there's branches overhanging that from an aerial make it appear dangerous when it is not. And so we're hearing a lot of factual concerns about, you know, what is the definition about, about the tree's distance to the house? And I'd like to hear your thoughts on that. And then just a quick question. The city managers just mentioned paying $190 and waiting all that time. I'm curious if the fees are the same as you're proposing making modifications, or would those also be modified?
I'll answer the latter first. So if we moved to do an exception, there wouldn't be any fees administered at that time, or at all, actually. So it's an exception. As far as the, what appears, what I have seen is that the site plans, or I should say the ARBIS reports, currently, we're requesting the ARBIS reports because we don't have the exception. What's within the ARBIS reports are very clear photos where the trees, they're so close to the house. Like, I have seen as close as two and a half feet, within two and a half feet, I've seen three feet, and then I've also seen five feet. And when you look at the photos, you can nod your head and say, yeah, I can see why the insurance company is requesting or signifying that this tree should be removed. So Vice Mayor Iverson, I haven't seen any, at least the applications that have come through, that I would say the canopy appears to be close to the house, because given the ARBIS report, they are within five feet, two feet, three feet of the home.
Okay, so now I'm a little bit confused, because if you say it's just an exception and there's no fee to be paid, what is the process by which you establish that? You know, if you're talking about ARBIS reports and they're having review by the planning department, isn't that the same thing that requires you to, I mean, whether you give a permit or you declare it exempt, isn't it the same cost to you in time and process?
Same cost in terms of staff cost and time. Depending on the documentation, yes, I still have to take the time to review the reports, sign the reports. But it's sort of like the emergency tree permit. If I receive, sometimes I'll receive an ARBIS report, and it's decayed, it's hobbled out. And so that's an emergency tree permit I'll sign and let them go and remove the tree. So there isn't a charge for that. But of course, this is ultimately up to you and your direction. So we made it an exception. It would be treated as all the other exceptions that we receive from MOFD. If we do receive them, I'll just say in my time, I haven't seen a letter from MOFD. So let me just put it that way. So, yeah, it wouldn't be a fee, it'd be an exception. And the documentation is what you decide the documentation could be. I think in part it should be the insurance company, the information where they do identify in many of those letters which trees they're talking about and where.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember G.
My question, Director Cross, is just, I want to make sure, if this becomes an exception for all of these exceptions, are you, are they required to show the paperwork or the documentation before they cut down the tree?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's what it says. Okay.
Councilmember Hoxsey.
So are you currently getting requests or documentation of a lot of people wanting to cut down trees? Or how many of these permit requests are you getting in a month or a year?
In one year, three. I've seen three, but we, like today, there's another inquiry. So maybe I might see five, you know? But so far, three that I have approved. And again, it's the documentation. They show me the State Farm letters, it's usually State Farm. State Farm letters. Many of them go as far as showing me a site plan of where the tree's located. And many of them, right now, because it is an exception, do have ARBIS reports.
So do you think our community is complying with the current tree ordinance? Or are we all sort of armchair fire experts and say, oh, that tree's got to go, and people are kind of cutting them down? I mean, I see so much tree work going on in our community. I'm just confused. Is that mostly just cutting limbs and not the whole tree? Or are people not actually complying with the ordinance and they're just doing what they think they need to do?
Councilmember, I think it's a little of all of it. I think some trees are being cut without tree permits. And I know we put in our Arinda outlook, again, just reminding the residents of Arinda, there is a tree permit process. Um, I, I've, I've come down to a resident who claimed to have gotten MOFD approval, but yet I couldn't verify who the fire inspector was. Um, down to, um, people truly submitting for the application, but you also do have some withdrawals. So, I mean, we just started 2025, so only five tree permit applications have come in. Uh, zero of them have been emergencies. Um, 2024, we received 24 permits. 12 of those have been emergencies. And I'll just go one more year, 2023, we received 23 tree, uh, removal permits and 16 of those have been removal, removal. Do we approve most of them? Yes. Because I believe my staff is really good at sort of filtering out. Some of these, even though I may call out 24 in 2024, 23 in 2023, some of them are withdrawals because staff is saying, you know, we may not look upon this favorably. And so applicants have withdrawn. Um, but as far as denial, I'd probably say, I've only seen one and that's one I signed, but it was actually a partial denial. It involved two trees. One of the trees was very healthy. The Arbor said it was very healthy and it didn't make sense to take it down except for the property owner said the neighbor wanted it down. So I did a partial denial and I said, nope, that one is to stay, but the other one can be removed. But most of them have been approved.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Other questions? Okay. I, I have a few then. Um, the cities, and I'm sorry if I just missed this in it, but the cities disallowed plant list. Is that? I, does, is that based in some way or connected to the, to MOFD's disallowed plants? Or is it different? Is it, is it coextensive with that and has it been involved? Has, does it evolve? I assume it includes Monterey pines and eucalyptus.
Yeah, it, it, it's consistent with MOFD. We, meaning planning doesn't have a separate disallowed plant list. We basically in, uh, part of your attachment in that tree ordinance handout, the last page identifies the disallowed plant list.
Oh, right. Okay. There it is. Okay. So for disallowed plants, we don't require any permit or application? Folks can just take them out or?
That is correct. I mean, some people have been reported for taking them out, code enforcement case. But once we look at this and see that it's one of the disallowed plant lists, we do not require a permit for.
Okay. Cause I, I would think we would want to encourage those to be removed. We would want to encourage removal as quickly as possible of anything on that list.
Correct. Um, yes.
Other questions? Okay. And if, I guess, I, do you want to finish? Uh, just if, and for the trees that have been removed or where the one, the applications we've received, the few, have they been mostly oaks? You know?
Yes, they're mostly oaks.
Okay.
Mostly oaks. Cause the pine, as you see, disallowed, the spruce is, yeah, they're mostly oak trees, you're telling me.
And if, so if someone wanted to, based on the recommended amendments, if someone wanted to create zone zero, it's not currently MOFD code. It's on, until the regulations are adopted, which may not happen until the end of this year. It's not currently state law. So, I mean, the city on its own could, do we have discretion to amend an, or our tree ordinance to allow removal of any tree within five feet if we wanted to? I'm not saying that we necessarily would, but I'm just.
Yeah, you are not as a city required to have a tree protection ordinance. The city I live in, for example, I don't think has one.
Okay. Um, cause, cause I, I do think, you know, we, we've gotten information that we're going to see state law evolve. And so I think we should keep that in mind. Other questions?
Are you?
Yeah.
So that was, that was my question. I was going to try to inch us towards the, the zone zero. So I want to just ask, has the city, uh, staff thought about, um, having an exception for zone zero? But, you know, you don't need to, uh, you can chop down protected trees within five feet of your house.
I, I think that's sort of what we are, I mean, ultimately up to the, the council, but that's sort of where we were headed with our recommendation.
Well, I think the current recommendation is about when the insurance company tells you to. And I'm saying, my insurance company isn't telling me to, but I want to. So there's nothing there yet that allows me to do that. And I'm thinking we might want to be forward thinking, anticipating the state law change that's going to come down the pipeline. And why wait nine months or 12 months? Get it on the books now, protect us, provide greater protection now. Why wait?
Okay. So I guess the question is, does staff have an opinion about that or?
When we were talking about these updates, we did discuss it. And we were sort of trying to figure out, well, that's part of what we could discuss with the council rather than us recommending that. If that's something that the council was interested in seeing, we could be more specific in the exception section and not just rely on state law when state law goes into effect or rely solely on the insurance companies having to require them. Well, we think it's an opportune time to have this discussion and we're pleased that the council wanted to bring it up because I fully expect we're going to see a lot more requests in 2025. And a lot, some of it will be based on insurance companies that are trying, that are being asked to reenter the market, are going to ask for more things from property owners to make sure that they would insure their homes if they're coming back. So that's one piece of it. And then two, we know that the regulations are coming. We know that there's a very public conversation around zone zero, uh, both locally and statewide now. And so we fully expect that more interest will come when people realize that they're doing home hardening and then they realize, well, I have this tree next to my house. I'd like to get rid of this tree as well. So.
Thank you. Any other questions before I open with public?
I have one other question.
Yes.
Uh, where do redwood trees fit in with this? We've had a lot of conversation about oak trees, but I had thought they were also included in our protected trees and our tree ordinance.
Redwoods, uh, that, that one I'd have to look up again. And the ordinance here, I have it.
Is the question about what's the definition of a protected tree?
Yeah, for the redwood.
Yes.
Redwood trees fall within that definition.
Um, depends on, uh, whether they are, okay. So protected tree is based on, uh, for the diameter at 4.5 feet. And then there's a bunch of oak trees listed.
Right.
But you can also have other trees on vacant or undeveloped sites that are of other species that are protected unless they're on the disallowed plant list. Does that sound right, LaShawn?
Yes.
And then there's a whole bunch of protections for native riparian trees.
Right. I saw that.
And then if it's a tree that was previously installed as a replacement, that is a protected tree as well.
Yeah. The way I, the way I understood this was that if redwood trees of a certain diameter, unless it's one of the species listed on disallowed, it would be protected.
Yes.
And if it's on a vacant or undeveloped parcel. I'm reading here from a page, page 187.
Oh, vacant or under, that's true.
And then it was, um, at the top of the next page, it talks about downtown trees as being protected as well.
Right. Right. Have, I, I just wonder if that's a little confusing for homeowners and whether we should specifically mention redwood trees? Because I know there's some large redwood trees within our city. Um, I don't know, as a protected type of tree.
Um, I, I think that's more of a comment, right?
It's a question.
Okay. And it, I mean, do we think it's confusing for folks?
I mean, you're backing into trying to figure out what trees are protected and what aren't. I mean, certainly you could have a tree ordinance that's very specific about what trees are protected at what diameter. So that's a modification the council could consider as well.
So, uh, one of, another one of my questions is, have we looked at or could we look at and see if what tree ordinance is in place in areas like Marin and Santa Monica and Montecito? And, you know, perhaps other places that are at high fire risk? And also seeing if, I don't know, any jurisdictions in LA without doing, I mean, not, I'm not saying you have to look at all of these places because I know that's a lot of work. But I am wondering if tree ordinances elsewhere have been modified in light of, you know, fire danger, zone zero, or if there's any guidance elsewhere and models that we could maybe look at. Um, cause I, with the eye of keeping this as simple and easy as possible for our residents and us to understand and us to apply. But anyway, but I think now I'm getting into discussion. Any other questions? Okay. Then I will open up this item. Which is item H1 for public comment. And I will note for the record that we did receive, um, a written public comment from Steve Khan, which we all received and read. And, um, I don't see any other cards or anyone here to give public comment. So I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. So who wants to start?
I, I totally think we should approve the staff's recommendation to include an exception for this insurance situation.
I think we should go a little further than that and give homeowners a little bit more flexibility within five feet of their home because I think people are worried and, and they may be doing it anyways. Or perhaps they're just cutting limbs off and not whole trees. And maybe they're not all, you know, live oaks and redwoods. But I think making it easier and more understandable for homeowners to comply is probably a good thing.
Anyone else?
I guess I'm, I'm nervous that, um, you know, trees are, we do get some correspondence about people being overzealous and, um, how important trees are for the soil erosion and for, you know, the shade and all sorts of things that are actually, trees are not intrinsically dangerous as long as they're not fire ladders. Um, I actually thought tonight's presentation was really thoughtful about, uh, sort of preempting those, you know, making sure there's an actual written external requirement. Um, I totally agree that it would be so hypocritical if we're trying to get people to comply with zone zero voluntarily, and then we make them get a permit to do it. So that would be silly, um, and we should preempt. But, um, I just really want to ask you to, to really keep your spidey sense up as you come up back with drafting. Um, that, that maintaining the spirit of that tree preservation, uh, ordinance is to make sure that healthy trees don't get cut down unless there's a good reason for it. Um, so no specific comments, just a little concern.
I absolutely agree, Brandon. I just think that it's totally different if you have a healthy tree, you know, 10 feet from your home in your backyard that's shading the backyard versus those trees that are right next to your home with the deck built around them. So with the holes, you know, that, which we've seen a lot of in Arinda too. We have to, I hope, give.
I would agree. Anything close to the house, I would agree. We should make that very easy.
That's, that's what I think.
Yeah. But it's, we'd heard from people when we were dealing with the fire ordinance in 2023, it was your entire property. You know, you're trying to make some of these huge lots fire resilient. Uh, and there was a lot of confusion about potential costs. And that was the only thing that I'm a little more worried about, but.
Right.
Totally agree.
Councilmember G.
Yeah. I, I mean, I agree with the comments that have been said. I certainly agree with the, um, exception for insurance requirements. But I also think the exception for, you know, zone zero makes sense. I mean, we're, we're going to get there one way or the other. And it just sort of seems like, um, you know, if that's the situation, it should be an exception. Um, but I also agree that, um, you know, continuing to, especially, um, with, um, you know, so much push to be more fire safe and mitigate things. It, the clarity and, you know, I think it is good to, you know, keep explaining to the community what this is and, and every place it could be made clearer. Because I do think protecting the trees that we're trying to protect is still important. I mean, I heard Chief Winnaker say many, many times that oak trees are not a tree that he was ever worried about in fire situations. So, and, and we do have, and we do have residents that can be zealous about wanting to cut things down. So I do, I, you know, so the fact that the clarity and how we publish it and what we explain, I think is important. But, you know, going with the zone zero and the insurance thing seems like it makes perfect sense. So.
And.
Councilmember, I just want to follow up on what's already been said about the, um, clarity of the, the ordinance. I'm, I find it very, very confusing. I, I know we all inherited this. Um, and if, with everyone nodding their heads, if we think that, then it's not very user friendly. Um, it's written for lawyers and I think we could specify trees and make exceptions for trees and tell people exactly what we want, what we mean. And that's a big project, I know.
So, yeah, I, yeah, I, I agree with, with all those comments. I do feel pretty strongly that we should include an additional exception, not just for the insurance requirements, but also for zone zero. Now, I do think that the regulations on zone zero will define what that is. And so this doesn't go towards clarity. But I would like to see a tree ordinance where the exceptions are exceptions that evolve. Right? So as insurance requirements evolves or as MOFD's ordinance evolves or as, um, zone zero regulations define what that means. Right now, we think it might mean nothing but rocks and concrete within five feet. But there's some discussion that oak trees could be allowed, right? Um, and we don't know what those regulations will be until the end of the year. Um, or they will, they will be done by the end of the year. They may, like, we'll know what they're looking at sooner, but, um, and so, you know, but the more you reference with regard to other documents, the less clear the ordinance is on its face. So that's always a toss up. I don't know if there's a way to do the, I'm also, I'm also concerned about having like too much of a burden on staff by saying like, let's go rewrite the whole thing. So I am wondering if for now, guidance with adding these exceptions, zone zero and, um, insurance company makes sense? And then continue to sort of keep an eye on the situation and see if maybe other jurisdictions or the state doesn't create an ordinance that sort of articulates some of this stuff in ways that we could then.
I mean, the government's executive order looked like it was exempt, it had an exception for mature trees within the five feet. But I do think homeowners, you know, may have fear that's not reflected in the, um, orders. And they, they may want to make a different decision.
I, I'm, I'm comfortable with allowing folks to take out anything within five feet. Um, but it is interesting, a lot of the oaks, you know, I, I think within five feet is so close to your house, right? But it is remarkable, the oaks that were limbed, a lot of them didn't burn, right? In the LA fires, so.
So I've heard the term zone zero and five feet be used interchangeably. I would recommend we be more specific as possible and say five feet in any ordinance change just so that I know if things evolve with zone zero, um, I wouldn't want us to try and figure out how to interpret what the current zone zero potential regulations might be. So I think we would be more comfortable with the definition of feet in the exception.
And maybe you have to specify the canopy versus the trunk of the tree. Because if the canopy is within five feet, but the trunk of the tree is further away, um, I don't know if that would be acceptable to remove or whether that could just be limbed back so that it was a, you know, I don't know.
Well, we can do what we want, right? But we should define that.
Right. So I think it would, the way it would work presently is.
Right. So I think it would, the way it would work presently is that you're permitted to trim branches as long as you don't endanger the health of the tree. You don't need a permit to just trim a branch.
To trim the branches.
So regardless of where the trunk is located, if what, if the work you're going to do is going to endanger the health of the tree, then the whole tree is going to have to come out.
Okay.
Thank you. That's helpful. Any other comments?
Okay, just, I have one final comment, which is just, I'm aware of the fact that this is a planning department burden. And the planning department has quite a lot of burdens right now. And I, I really like that suggestion actually of some, of clarifying a little bit if we can. And so I'd actually, I thought that was a really interesting idea to maybe do a little emergency amendment for right now that allows proof of insurance company requirement, or I think you said five feet as just a short term quickie amendment. And then let's maybe say within the next year to come back with something that's a more holistic, you know, a five year update that was last done in 2021. But I think we can make some real improvements, but I'd hate to make it a priority.
I would agree with that. Understood. It sounds like there's consensus around limited clarity in the ordinance, the insurance exception and the five feet. And those are the three things that we'll take away and we'll make some modifications. And then I think the process would be going back to planning commission before bringing it back to this council.
Thank you. And I do want to thank the planning director for the thoughtful presentation. I agree with the vice mayor on, on that and also for working with our resident who, you know, had the frustration of having an insurance company take, say, take out this tree. And then, you know, feeling like they couldn't immediately do so. So thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to item H2, which is I think a very fun agenda item, the city of Arinda's 40th year of incorporation. And we're going to discuss ideas on how to celebrate.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, it's 40 years. It's your ruby anniversary this year. That is the 40th stone that's associated with it, if you're interested in knowing that fact. But there's a number of ways that the city council could consider commemorating this important anniversary. You could certainly proclaim it. You could work with community groups to help advertise the 40th anniversary. Staff had discussed maybe developing a special anniversary logo that we could use for the year on different collateral material and on our outreach pieces. We could order pins, which are always nice to have as commemorative items and patches for the city. And potentially work with the historical society on any, like a display that we could kind of share with sort of the history of the cityhood of this community. And we could share that via, you know, here in our facilities as well as on our online channels. You could, we could, and be, unless you have any objection to it, we could highlight it as part of the budget document then and now and see if you see any changes in the community. We could organize a city reception or work with community groups on some sort of more special celebration event. It's worth noting too, it's also the 100th anniversary of the Arinda Community Center, which was the original schoolhouse in the community. And so trying to figure out a way to also incorporate the 100th anniversary of that facility would also be a nice touch. So we just wanted to open it up to the council, see what your thoughts were about ways to celebrate. We've attached for your reference, the previous anniversary staff reports from the 25th and the 30th anniversary. Just to get the juices flowing and tell us what you'd like to see happen in this 40th year of cityhood.
Great. Any questions before we have public comment and move to discussion? Councilmember Riley?
Did we, did OA have a 40th anniversary last year?
Believe that they had some sort of event. Yes, Sherry did.
They had the 40th anniversary at the Fourth of July parade. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember G?
But that was supposed to be their, was that their 40th anniversary?
When I went back and looked at it, it actually said that it was the 40th anniversary of the Fourth of July parade, not their 40th anniversary.
Of the parade.
Yes, because they were around before the city became incorporated. Yeah. So I can tell you that there was talk of doing a big gala with OA a few years ago. Cause I think the real 40th anniversary, anyway, might've been a couple of years ago. And it just didn't get off the ground. But, but there may be more volunteers now. We can talk about it. Any other questions? Councilmember?
I guess my question is, has either the Arinda Association or the Historical Society, has anybody else already reached out to staff or? I haven't had anyone contact me. Have you, the mayor have?
No.
No.
No, we haven't had any contact, them contacting us and us contacting.
Okay.
But it's only February 18th.
The mayor brought it up at the mayor's liaison meeting. You did bring it up to, into the community groups at our last meeting. It was a great way of getting hopefully their interest.
I did, I did. Didn't, I put, put the feelers out there. That's true. I forgot about that. Thank you, Sherry. Any other questions?
One more, one more?
Yeah.
When, when did we become sister cities with? Tabor, was that 40 years as well?
We've been on 24 exchange studios. I would guess it's.
Okay, I was just seeing if we could tie it into something else.
I don't remember when it was, but it wasn't all the way back.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, I will open item H2 to public comment. And we have no speaker cards and I don't see any members of the public here to comment. So if there's no public comment, I will close public comment and bring this back to the council for discussion. So any thoughts, comments?
I liked all those ideas. I thought they were all good ideas. I know we won't be able to do them all, but any subset of them I think would be great.
I mean, obviously some of the ideas that we have on that list are pretty standard and we can do them as a matter of our regular business activities. I think the issue or the, we could certainly talk, if you want us to reach out to the Historical Society and look at trying to find some old photographs that we could display both around the community center as well as the 40th anniversary for the community, that we could, we could work to coordinate with the Historical Society on some sort of project. The real ask is if you want us to do some sort of special event, either in conjunction with a community organization or on your own. And I've had this experience previously and I was telling the mayor, it's very difficult for the city to sell tickets to something. We don't, we don't have as much success than maybe a community organization who might want to partner with you that has that sort of base of community support that might want to attend something. So if you are interested in doing some sort of larger celebration type event, the suggestion would be you might want to partner with somebody in the community to do that.
I, may I?
Yes. I was thinking if we could celebrate the opening or the groundbreaking of some significant project, we could wrap it around the, the anniversary as well. So I'm envisioning that median being broken and we celebrate our 40th, this great accomplishment. I envision us somehow breaking ground or erecting our, or installing our new crossroads place. Vanity project. And then just using that as, you know, a platform or a way to, to talk about how we've been here for 40 years.
If I might, I noticed in some of the prior staff reports that an elegant way of doing it was just to have a little booth at something that was like one of the concert in the park nights or the Fourth of July parade. I think they, they had a little bit more of a tricked out city council float with the 40th. And then maybe we have a little kind of a booth at the after thing. So it's not a separate, you know, at that point you've got all the people there anyway. So I thought those were clever ways of doing it. Speaking for myself, I didn't feel that an event was necessarily merited by 40. It's like for 50 maybe, but.
I agree with that.
I don't want to be a grump.
I also think some of the people who were involved in establishing the city of Arinda are still active members of our community. And we could reach out to them to help us with the history of how it came to be that we became a city and photos that they might have and maybe even honoring them for the work that they did to help us become incorporated.
Go ahead, councilmember G.
My suggestion is maybe we should have an ad hoc city council committee that could meet with OA, OCF, the Historical Society, anybody else we want to meet with, see what they all think and see what the appetite is for, you know, helping or whether they have other ideas of, you know, how to incorporate it. And then some of the things I think are very straightforward, we should do anyway, like the logo and the pin and the proclamation and photos and all that. But I think it'd be easy to just have some people that wanted to reach out to the other groups and see what they think. The more excited they are, the more possibilities there are, so.
I completely, completely agree with you and was having a similar discussion with our city manager earlier. I think, I think if outside organizations like Arinda Community Foundation, or Arinda Association, or the Rotary Club, or any of the wonderful organizations here, Garden Club, you know, would, would want to come together and work on a gala, that would be amazing. But I think it would necessitate a couple of us leading. So I would actually support a motion to, to form an ad hoc committee. Is anyone volunteering to serve on that ad hoc committee, councilmember G? Or anyone else? Is anyone interested in doing so?
How about our cultural outreach?
Yeah, yeah, I knew that was coming. Yeah, I'm a natural, sure. All along too?
No, we would take two members. I would be willing to be one unless two of you would rather do it. In which case I'm happy to not be involved.
I'm happy to help Janet do that if that's what the council wants.
Sounds good.
Being old term time listeners.
Sounds like we have two volunteers from councilmember Hoxey or volunteered, volunteers.
Would this ad hoc committee also have some role in dealing with staff? If we wanted to show them a couple of variations of logos and things like that to bounce some ideas off pins and things like that.
Just to be clear, we're not running all the celebrations.
No.
No. We're just getting out there and asking, you know, getting a feel for things, making suggestions and not necessarily, yeah.
Right. You're liaising and with other organizations if and when they step up to help run something, right?
Okay.
Isn't that the idea? We would, I don't think we have city resources to do this, right? So.
Not a proclamation and a logo you do.
Yeah, we'll do the little things and we can, if it, if there is an ad hoc, we could say, hey, here are a couple of options for the 40th logo. Do you like this one, that one? You know, as opposed to coming back and having a whole conversation about it. We could do that. We could, you can make some phone calls, send some emails, see, remind people it's the 40th anniversary. Is there any interest in seeking opportunities to celebrate by those other organizations? We'd like to figure out who's interested in celebrating with us and figure out what that looks like and minimize the amount of work for staff and see how much community support there is to maybe initiate some activities.
And based on that, decide whether or not it makes sense to do an event or not, right?
Yeah.
I think a lot of this would happen in the next maybe 60 to 90 days at best.
Yeah, no, I think there are a lot of great ideas and I, I don't really think it's going to turn into be a big gala. But I think there are lots of ways to celebrate all year without extra work.
I agree. Okay, so do we have a motion then?
I, I'm happy to make a motion that we form an ad hoc subcommittee of two council members to liaison with all the community groups that might be interested in helping support the city and celebrating our 40th anniversary.
And.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now do we need a second motion to appoint councilmembers Hoxey and Riley to that ad hoc committee? Anyone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Councilmembers Riley and Hoxey.
All right. And have lots of dinners and lunches. Looking forward to it.
And with that, that brings us to council member reports. Does anyone have a report they would like to share? Councilmember G?
You can help me, Madam Mayor. We did have, since our last council meeting, we had a a two by two subcommittee with MOFD, which I thought was a very good, good meeting, had a good public turnout. Obviously the interest in the community remains very high in regard to fire prevention and mitigation issues. It was our first meeting with Chief Isaacs in the role. And we got an update on compliance from MOFD, which was not particularly stellar in terms of how many open issues they still had in the community of people not being in compliance with citations. We were able to ask some questions in regards to the Southern California fires. A little bit about the upcoming fire maps, which for Contra Costa County are expected to be issued next week, February 24th.
February 24th, correct.
So that will be insightful in terms of how much more of our community and, and our fire district may be classified as very high fire severity. There was also a lot of further discussion about home hardening activities, things that MOFD is still doing. We mentioned, our city manager and the chief mentioned their ongoing discussion collaboration for easier access to communications with the public, bringing together a lot of information that's out there and maybe making it more user friendly in one website. So what have I forgotten?
Nope. I think you covered most of it. Our city manager is, I think, leading some efforts to have this Arinda Ready.
Yeah, so we're working on an arindareddy.com website and staff's going to be working and working to. One other thing that MOFD mentioned at the meeting is that they're also bringing on a communications consultant for their work because they know that they need to do a better job of their outreach efforts. And so there's a willingness to look at partnering more closely together on getting quality information out into the community. And we think maybe a one stop location for the community to access that information would be best, the best solution as opposed to trying to find information on our website, information on their website. And really that's not how people live their daily lives. They want to go to one place to get all the information that they need.
And then a couple additional things, just that in discussing, as, once these maps come out, the very, you know, if it, if it is the case that a much larger part of Arinda becomes in the very high fire severity zone, which is sort of what the chief was anticipating may happen. Then since zone zero will apply to that zone, there is, you know, there was some discussion to whether MOFD would then be looking at implementing zone zero in their local ordinance so that it was consistent with both state law and the industry IBHS guidelines. And there was, we had a, we had actually a very long meeting. I think that councilmember G summarized it well, but there was a pretty in-depth discussion about, you know, the need to really have consistent standards, right? And what that would look like and what that meant. And then there's this administrative process. So while the governor's order requires the zone zero implementing guidelines to be completed by the end of the year, what that means is that because of the, you know, goes through the state administrative process, I think we're going to have an inkling of what those look like sometime in the next few months. And then the other things that we talked about is we shared that something that we already shared. And then the other things that we talked about is we shared that, something that we already shared here, which is that we are pursuing the city and MOFD together and the school district. So this is a great collaborative, you know, projects. We're pursuing these parent education nights, right? And I know that our city manager has already been working with our school district and fire chief on one with OUSD and we're going to be doing it with, you know, and, and there was expressed a need for more public education on that. And, you know, people are concerned. So we may also see if it makes sense to go back to Arinda Association and have them host another community education night, maybe in, you know, April or sometime like that down the road soon. So, and yes.
Yeah, one other thing we should bring up because it did, it did get discussed at the subcommittee, but it's also been being discussed in other forums and other conversations. And that is the continuing need for our, probably our La Marinda area, which we have talked about coordination, particularly with East Bay Mud and East Bay Regional Parks. There continues to be quite a bit of concern about our surrounding landowners and their impact. So we did have that conversation and I know that's continuing in other ways. But I think the, the consensus is, is there, there does need to be continued action for that coordination, so.
And we've had some direct communications. Both the city manager has spoken to East Bay Parks and I spoke with our, our nearly, our current East Bay Parks rep. And that resulted in an invitation for a meeting that we just got today. And are in the process of scheduling, so we'll keep you updated on that. And then we also, I think that was it from the meeting.
Yep.
I, I'll, I'll let you address sort of regional efforts in this, in your city manager's report. Do you want me to talk about the sort of legislative efforts?
We, well, let me know when it's my time.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll hold on that and not address that. Any other council member reports? Okay, I was gonna just share a couple of things. One is there was also an SSTOC meeting, which I attended as liaison. There was a presentation on funding, funding proposals and some of the same issues that were actually, we addressed in the two by two were addressed there. Our newest member joined, I think it was a productive, helpful discussion. I don't know that there's, a lot of the discussion is somewhat overlapping of what was discussed at the two by two. Two other things out in this gallery here is some incredible artwork. The La Marinda Arts Council did an opening for the show. It's a show by five Muslim women artists and they had a huge lovely turnout. It was a couple Saturdays ago. And they asked me to come and give some opening remarks. And it was really a touching, wonderful thing. And the artwork is spectacular, so please tell everyone to look at it. And then this last Sunday, so I've had a few residents who had talked to me about their concerns in my neighborhood with Arinda Oaks Park and wanting, you know, raised concerns about that. And, and, you know, I discussed those concerns with the city manager, but I also used that as an opportunity to say, you know what we really need here is fire wise, folks. And so, which is one thing, if you complain to a council member, then, or not complain, but raise concerns, you may be brought in as part of the solution. So, so two of our neigh, my neighbors did all the legwork and actually knocked on doors and went around. Cause I told them, if you organize it, I'll host it at my house. So I hosted this Sunday at our home. A group of, and 45 neighbors came and so, and we got a leader and, and Mark Evans came and presented. And so we're on our way to having a Donald Drive Firewise Council. And Mark Evans, I promised him I would say this. So he is asking me to challenge all my fellow council members and everyone on the MOFD board to do the same. And I was really clear that all I was doing is opening up the home and I only provided drinks. I told them all they had to bring potluck. So I was really clear on how limited my role would be. But it is, you know, you can say to folks, I'm a volunteer council member. You all need to organize the fire wise. So it did work and I just wanted to share, it was a lovely experience in addition to getting to know a lot of neighbors.
That's, okay.
Anyone else? No? Okay.
All right.
City manager?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. So just a reminder that March 5th is the state of the city with, with the Arinda Rotary. And the nuance to this one is a little bit different because the attorney general has an opinion now that says that these are public meetings if two or more council members attend and that they would have to be noticed as special city council meetings. So we're checking with Rotary to see how they want to handle that since it's their event, if they are interested in having you all attend and have it be a special city council meeting or whether they would only prefer to attend and not have to sort of address having an agenda and a public comment period at their largely social gathering and event. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to let you know that we're, we're working on that.
But the date was March 5th?
March 5th.
I thought you could have more there if you were just observing. That's what my, our legal counsel told us. Like when I came here for the insurance, all five of us were here. And I went to a, a safety meeting and I, I just observed and that was okay.
So there is an exception to the Brown Act for open and public community meetings organized by somebody other than the city. And the attorney general's opinion focused on, in the case that he was, or she was advising on in the time, it was they were charging admission and that was the thing that really caused the issue. So I don't know the details of this event, if there's free admission permitted, if it's open, if it's public, if, how many council members are planning to attend. But staff and I can, we'll make sure that we are in compliance with the Brown Act.
We're simply querying the Rotary and how they want to best handle that as well. I mean, we can do it either way, right? We can notice the meeting, but we just wanted to make sure that they knew that this was an additional requirement if all council members decided to attend. And that's based on the attorney general's opinion specifically around state of the city addresses. So it was very specific.
It was a recent, it was a pretty recent opinion.
I mean, it was in the last few years.
It was in, at the end of 20, or late 2024.
Yeah. Okay, so that was after the 2024 state Rotary. So that's all I want to.
It's got, most cities sort of trying to figure out how to handle it. This is probably the first year where you're going to see a lot of cities trying to address this most recent opinion about state of the cities and their need to be agendized. So that's coming up. I recently attended the League City Managers Department meeting. That was, I think, very helpful on getting to understand what other communities are dealing with. A lot of discussion around emergency preparedness at that as well for city managers. The SSTOC, as the mayor had indicated, had their meeting and discussed their annual report, which I believe will be coming back to the city council. We're targeting for March 4th, so they'll be back to present their annual report to you at the next meeting. The school two by two is tomorrow night, Wilders is next week, Infrastructure is next week as well. And the mayor had mentioned that we've been working a lot of legislative angles to the extent possible to try and get support for a number of efforts that we have ongoing in, in Arinda, including funding to, and to help facilitate some regional activity around wildfire resilience, disaster preparedness, potentially looking at the vulnerabilities of our area and see if we can do some sort of regional assessment around that. Looking for our legislators to help support us and maybe helping to fund those types of activities. We are going to be doing a tour with Senator Grayson at the end of April. He'll be coming into town to meet and do meeting greet and kind of see the community firsthand. I think that's April 25th, I believe he'll be in, yeah. He'll be in town for that. And we just continue to try and talk to as many groups and people as possible to help share the message, including supervisor's office. So we're just really trying to work hard to advocate for our position and try to find funding. And as I mentioned to you, in my Friday email to you is the funding did not come through for the feasibility study for Maraga Way. So we're not going to lose hope. We're going to continue to see who might be out there that'd be willing to fund that feasibility study for us. So I'll still talk to staff and see who else, what other doors we can knock on to try and find a solution for that. But we, we think it's an important project and we want to keep it moving forward.
Yeah, and just our, our assemblyman, I mean, our assembly person's office and our supervisor Candace Anderson's office, you know, have, have been really supportive. And Senator Grayson's been incredibly, his office has been incredibly supportive of these efforts. So they've all just been, I think, really helpful and, and willing to work with us and, and advocate on our behalf. So that's, that's good, encouraging.
Okay, that's my report.
Moving.
Well.
So moving on to, do we have any matters initiated, item K? Okay. Then I think we will, next on our agenda is adjournment. And then we do have, following that, a closed session. So first, do we have a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item M is closed session.
Mayor Malcony, if anyone is here to speak on the items listed, we should listen to any comment they might have. But at this point, we don't think we need to meet in closed session. We've accomplished what we needed to at the six o'clock special meeting.
Okay, so I don't see any speaker cards. Do we have anyone here who wants to speak on closed session items? Listed on the agenda? Seeing none. I will close public comment of closed session matters. And it sounds like we don't need to have a, hold a closed session. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I don't know that I reported out of our earlier closed session, but there were no reportable items. I will, I will.
Correct.
Put that on the record now. And with that, we are adjourned from everything, including the closed session.
We didn't. Are you dragging it on? You are excused, Mayor Malcony.
I'm sorry, I'm tired.